Federman, are you present? Governor Federman, are you present as well? Oh, sorry. Governor Federman, are you there?
I am.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Uh, we are going to resume with the eleven forty-five AM session, Mr. Stan S. Rosenthal. We have, um, John Johnson, we also have some other DOC representatives, um, CCPM Olinger, we have Deputy Clark. Um, we also have Christine Polizano, who, uh, was an instructor at Temple University Inside-Out Program. Um, and then we also do have, um, some opposition as well, um, Mr. Adam Tepper, uh, Mr. Don Ben, and Mr. Joel Rosen. Um, board members, if you would like to start, uh, with your questioning?
Questioning of whom, I'm sorry.
Uh, let's start with the DOC representatives.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
I, I, I don't have any questions for the DOC representatives.
Nor do I.
Nor do I.
Thank you.
I'm anxious to hear from the, the victims and, and those impacted by this.
Wonderful. Um, so first then what we will do is we'll have, uh, Ms. Polizano give her statement of support and then we'll move on to the victims for their, uh, their statements. Ms. Polizano?
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great, thank you. Um, Secretary Trustee, Lieutenant Governor Federman, and Honorable Members of the Board, um, I prepared a statement today that I'd like to read. Um, and I know that these can be, uh, very long and mentally draining days for you, so I'll try to keep it brief. Um, my name is Christie Polizano, and I first met Stan about ten years ago. We worked together professionally for some time on activ- activities programs. When I moved on from my previous job, we became good friends. Our friendship is built on that professional relationship that led to earn trust and respect over several years. It is through that lens that I believe I can attest to who Stan is as a person and why I believe in him and his successful reentry if given a second chance. I think anyone who knows Stan would tell you he's an extremely hard worker. I saw this firsthand in how diligent, organized, and detail-oriented he was in our work together. I'm sure his packet he has prepared for you today can attest to that as well. Over his thirty-plus years of incarceration, Stan has been a key leader in the Activities Department at Greaterford and now he has helped organize dozens of events with hundreds of participants, like the Lifers Incorporated Family Banquets and international educational conferences. He has organized countless educational workshops, ceremonies, sporting events, and competitions. Once you get to know Stan though, and push beyond the professionalism he displays, it's easy to see that, yes, he is a hard worker, but that drive from, comes from his motivation to do good. To try to do good and give back to his current community of peers he has lived with and the staff he has come to know over three decades. Stan is constantly trying to support the community of people inside the prison. Stan is also extremely dedicated and devoted to his family and friends. Both Stan's parents passed away during his incarceration, but he has a remaining brother, Rick, who is the most important person in Stan's life and who has supported Stan throughout his thirty years of incarceration. Rick has recently gone through some serious health scares, as you are well aware, the communication, excuse me, the commutation process is long, intense, and at times can be stressful. It's obvious to me that one of Stan's motivations to push through and remain hopeful is his wish to spend his remaining years with Rick and reciprocate all the love and support in ways he has not been able to while incarcerated. As I mentioned, Stan shows his love and appreciation of people through his work, but also in how he keeps in touch with positive people in his life, both incarcerated and not. If he's talking, if he's not talking about work, he's talking about his friends, family members, whose kid just graduated high school, who's getting married, and who went where on vacation. Stan is also a man of faith and is deeply committed to his Jewish faith and community. Throughout his incarceration, he has developed strong bonds and listened to the guidance of rabbis who volunteer at the prison. He's maintained connection to his synagogue in Philadelphia who have continued to support him as well. Stan has worked hard at bettering himself each day over the past thirty years. For example, through the stress of the pandemic, he's maintained his daily yoga practice because he knows the benefits that serves his mental and physical health. He has taken probably all the available educational and self-improvement classes the DOC has, has offered. He values any opportunity to learn, learn and grow and is constantly reading a new book. He has taken the initiative to write letters of apologies to individuals he has harmed. Not only is Stan an upstanding individual who would continue to do great things if he is granted commutation, but he is also has, he also has the necessary supports in his life to help him succeed. He's had multiple friends offer up their homes to support him in, in supportive and healthy environments. His remaining family have offered housing, employment, financial, and emotional support if he comes home. Stan's synagogue has offered their support as well. Stan has multiple job offers waiting for him if he's granted the opportunity, including an offer from my own brother, who owns a fitness center. Stan is more than qualified to work there in an administrative role or lead group yoga sessions. Whether or not Stan takes that job, myself and my family will continue to support him in his reentry, specifically around maintaining his sobriety. My family has had experiences with addiction and sobriety, including my mom, who will be six years sober this summer. We know firsthand staying clean requires commitment from the individual and for everyone that surrounds themselves, and for everyone they surround themselves with. To be clear, I think Stan's sobriety over the past thirty years speaks for itself, but I know that it can be a concern when considering his release. Stan has shown he can maintain his sobriety and has several communities who would support him in that regard if released. Stan and I have spoken about what he would do if he was given a second chance. In these conversations, he always emphasizes a few things. He wants to live a quiet life with a pet cat and do regular dinners with his brother and coffee shop visits with good friends. He wants to spend quality times with the loved ones and take care of them after so many years spent taking care of him. Equally important to Stan is that he wants to continue to use his skill set to give back to the Philadelphia community, whether that's through his synagogue, volunteering in, in animal shelters, or other volunteer opportunities. Stan would be the first to tell you that there is no amount of good he can do to repair the harms he has done to the victims of his crimes, with Dawn and her family, and his own family. Stan told me a long time ago and has reiterated since that he has lived each day of his life trying to do good, to repent, and would continue to do so each day he is home. It's hard to speak about reentry and second chances when Stan's crime took the life of someone and whose family does not have the opportunity of a second chance. That fact is not lost on me or on Stan, and I want to be clear, I am not here to undermine that in any way. Stan's application for commutation does not intend to undermine that truth either. He is the first to admit that he will live with the heavy burden of guilt, shame, and regret for the rest of his life. Stan's application and me being here today is about a plea for a second chance for someone who has spent over three decades incarcerated. I know if he was granted that opportunity, he would not let his family, this board, or himself down. He has done so much to care for his community inside prison, and I believe deserves mercy and opportunity to give back to his community outside of prison. I'd welcome Stan as a friend, coworker, and neighbor. He has done an immense amount of work to better himself and become a man of genuinely good moral, good moral character that he is today. Thank you all again for allowing me the time to share with you about Stan, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, I do not have any questions.
No questions. No questions.
Thank you, Ms. Polizano. Uh, we do have, um, some victim opposition available, uh, for any questions from the board. We have, uh, Adam Tepper, Don Ben, and Joel Rosen.
I, I have a number of questions, but I don't wanna jump ahead of Ms. Grace.
I, I would like to hear from the victim oppositions. I don't, I don't have any questions or don't know if I will have any until I hear from them.
Mr. Tepper, did you wanna speak first? Mr. Tepper, are you available? Okay, um, moving on to Joel Rosen, did you have something to say to the board?
I do have questions for Mr. Tepper, though, is he, is he available for questions?
We are trying to get him in, I, we, he might have some technical difficulties.
Mr. Malone, were you trying to jump in there, or?
Hello, um, my name's Tom Malone, I'm representing Mr. Tepper. I know he had every intention of joining, and I'm going to step aside to make a phone call to him in London and make sure he, uh, is able to join this Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Malone. Um, did we wanna move to Mr. Rosen while we're trying to, uh, locate Mr. Tepper?
Yes, can you, can you hear me, I'm sorry?
Oh, Joel?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful, Mr. Rosen, thank you so much. I know you're trying to give you a call. Um, do you have a statement you'd like to make to the board?
Just, I, really briefly, 'cause I really think this is more for the family to speak about how this has affected them and their lives. Just as background, I'm the prosecutor who handled the original trial, uh, against Mr. Rosenthal. Um, I, I was a DA for twenty-two years, I was a homicide prosecutor for eight or nine years, I handled a lot, a lot of murder cases. And I just say that in saying that because of the passage of time and the number of cases I handled, many, many, many cases you would contact me about, and I frankly would not remember any of them. I was contacted by Mr. Tepper when he learned that, that Mr. Rosenthal was applying for pardon, commutation, and I instantly remembered this case. And unfortunately, the reason I, I remembered it was just the nature of the murder. This in, in the eight or nine years in which I did hundreds of murder cases, I was doing nothing but was one of the frankly bloodiest, worst in terms of manner of homicides that I handled. Not just in terms of the, the nature, and I'm sure the, the, the board knows the facts of the case, I won't reiterate them, but not just in terms of the nature of the assault upon this woman, but also in terms of the length of time during which it occurred. This wasn't just a, you know, one minute, two minute, one hour, two hour thing where somebody's life changed. It took place over hour after hour after hour after hour, and I can't imagine what that young woman went through. I know that there is some discussion about this being a murder that happened because of drug use. But to be clear, my recollection of the trial was there was a motive for this murder, uh, which that was that Ms. Tepper was going to leave him, he threatened to kill her, she did, and he carried out on that act. To me, and I apologize, I haven't looked at the record in a million years, but my recollection is this was not a, a drug-induced murder. This was some, a too unfortunate, too common case of violence against women in a very not unusual situation that was just exceptionally brutal. So, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Attorney Malone, did you have?
I have some questions, actually.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought, we're, okay.
And I don't have any.
Yeah. I, I apologize to Ms. Grace, I didn't mean to be, I just, I thought.
No, I said I don't have any.
Okay. Um, sir, thank you for taking the time to, to, uh, appear today. Do you, do you, and then this may, you know, I, this may be asking too much, but do, do you have any recollection of the toxicological aspects of this case? Uh, you know, the expert, uh, Dr. Green, is that, do you recall any of that that we can ask you about, or is?
I, I can tell you exactly what I remember, which is I remember that he was claiming, this was what's called the diminished capacity defense. And what a diminished capacity defense, I'm sure you know, it's just, it's, I can't form the specific intent to kill because I put drugs at the time of the murder. The, the first, I, I remember picking up the hospital records and, and seeing that, um, the toxicology reports were negative, so I, I, I just remember thinking that's a pretty poor defense. I also, I believe I called other witnesses, it may be the arresting police officers, who testified that he didn't appear to be under the influence of drugs at the time. I mean, the only other thing I'll say, I don't remember any other details, I do apologize. The only other thing I do recall thinking was that, you know, it's one thing to have a drug-induced murder that takes place in an hour, a half hour, an hour and a half, but not over that length of time, that doesn't, didn't make any sense to me. But beyond that, I really don't have a recollection, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and I just have one question, uh, for you about that, because that, that was something that really struck me as well, that, um, it appeared to be an approximately forty-eight hour murder.
Yeah.
You agree with that?
Yeah, I, I remember, I know it was longer than twenty-four, I, I don't make a statement that's not correct. It was really long, I'd never, as a, as a prosecutor, I'd never really, as a homicide prosecutor, that was, I'd never really handled anything like that. It was very unusual.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Uh, 'cause we, I believe we have Mr. Tepper available now.
That's correct.
Wonderful. Um, you can go ahead and give a statement if you'd like.
Okay, I've sent the statement in, but I'm gonna read it, um, so you can all see it. Also, while I speak, there's a picture of my sister Dawn, so you're gonna put a face to the murder. Um, my statement read, on the thirteenth of, uh, May nineteen ninety-eight, my sister Dawn Tepper was brutally beaten with a four-inch-thick wooden clothes rail and stabbed multiple times whilst being held hostage by Stan Rosenthal. Uh, that resulted in her death ultimately. Uh, this was not just a random attack, um, or a crime of passion, but a premeditated brutal murder. Sorry, am I interrupting you?
No.
No, I'm so sorry, the lady was talking to somebody else, so. Okay, um, this was, this resulted in my sister's death. It was a ran, it wasn't a random attack, not a crime of passion, but a premeditated murder. Um, it was a brutal stabbing and beating and hostage-taking of my sister, which, as you highlighted a few minutes ago, to Mr. Rosen, uh, to, 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 uh, Mr. Rosen, uh, was over a forty-eight-hour period. Um, after the torture and her beating, Dawn's mother, my eldest brother, and I arrived at the hospital to see Dawn, who was not recognizable. If you look at this picture, you can see how she looks to look, and I sent that in with my statement. Her head was five times its normal size, maybe three to five times. Um, um, her beautiful blonde hair, she had lovely blonde hair, it was scelted and left on the windowsill by her bedside. Dawn fought for five days until her life support machine was switched off. She died in my arms, in her mother's arms, in my other, my older brother's arms. I gave evidence at the trial in nineteen ninety-eight. I had previously spoken to Stan Rosenthal, who had threatened to kill my sister Dawn. He wasn't stoned, he was talking normally, I was speaking to him on the telephone. It was premeditated, he said that he would murder her if she threatened to leave him, and that, that was his premise for his threats. He was frightened, he was a frightened man, and he didn't want her to leave him. He was very lucky to have somebody as beautiful as my sister, uh, to be with him. Uh, I was, I was present for the entire trial with my father, my, 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 my brother. Uh, during the trial, Rosenthal stated admitted that he did murder Dawn because she was belligerent, thereby following through the premeditation. He murdered her because she was belligerent. He knew exactly what he was doing, he was, had his full faculties. Whatever anyone says, the toxicology report showed nothing except isopan in his system. That's the facts we can go by, we can't rewrite the trial now. We can't go through the whole system and say this was wrong or that was wrong. I had a long conversation with ADA Boyet, which was a disgusting conversation, where she tried to trick me into certain things, which I'll go through in a minute, but I'll go back to the statements. Uh, as I said, I was present for the whole trial. Um, prior to Dawn's brutal murder, we were just a normal family, just like many families were spoken today. My father was a successful businessman, and my mother was a normal, relatively happy housewife. Dawn's eldest brother was a deputy district judge, a prosecutor, a defense lawyer. My second eldest brother, Stephen, he was a qualified jeweler, he owned his own business. And I was Dawn's youngest brother, I was her baby brother. We had a special, a very special bond, me, my mother, and my sister, more than my other brothers. Uh, and I was trained to be a professional athlete at the time. Um, the impact of Dawn's murder has had such a dramatic effect on every single one of Dawn's family. Uh, our mother committed suicide in nineteen ninety-two. When I was tricked into speaking to ADA Boyet recently, or Boyet, she said to me, oh, your mother had a pre-existing condition. I beg your pardon? My mother suffered with depression, so that was okay for her to kill herself because her daughter was murdered. I think that's disgusting. Um, so, my mother tried to kill herself in nineteen, she killed herself in nineteen, she tried to make attempts before that. Our mother wasn't able to attend her dau, her own daughter's funeral. My mother couldn't attend her funeral because she was so distraught. She instead stayed with her mother, my grandmother, and, um, she looked after her mother, and my grandmother died eighteen months after my mother's suicide. This is just, this is, this is, this begs belief. My father and I prevented my mother's suicide on several occasions. That's why I stayed in the UK and then go back to Australia to, to train to be a professional squash player. Um, unfortunately, she succeeded, and, uh, because she couldn't cope with, with, with Dawn's loss, and she left a note to that saying, uh, that she could not cope, and she couldn't cope with life without Dawn, I still have the note, if anyone wants to see it. Dawn's father never recovered from, from his only daughter's death. He lost his business, he remained a ruined man. Though throughout his life, he fought to stay supportive to us, to, to his sons, he suffered with tragic remorse, senseless guilt, and daily nightmares waking most nights for the rest of his life. Until he died, he was having nightmares of the death and murder, brutal murder of my sister, the hostage-taking of my, my sister, his dau, his only daughter. Dawn's brother, Stephen, never recovered. He entered into a spiral of black tea depression and has, has been on medication ever since, the murder of his sister. Unfortunately, his life has been so badly affected, Stephen, uh, he isn't able to cope with the smallest problem. If Rosenthal is released, I fear for my brother's life, I think he will end it. He's not a well person, it's affecting him very badly. After Dawn's murder, I never re, I never, um, I never returned to Australia, as I said, my career as an athlete, uh, because I had to look after my mother and father. And by looking after my mother, I made, I managed to keep her alive for a further six years after the brutal murder of her daughter. Um, I still train and exercise, and that's managed to keep me, keep my feelings and pain, uh, subdued slightly, but we all continue to feel daily pain. Um, my life and the lives of my father and mother and brothers have been, could have been a million ways different had Dawn not been brutally murdered by Rosenthal. What you or anybody will not know are the many personal tragic events that occurred because of my sister's death. When Dawn's body arrived back in the UK, my father, Sam, he insisted on seeing her body, my sister's body, his daughter's body. She, they sealed the coffin because her head was so badly beaten, because she was stabbed multiple times. Her head, as I said, was three or four times its size. They wouldn't open the coffin, so you know what I had to do? My brother Stephen and I, we rolled the coffin into a quiet area, and we tried to unscrew the coffin. I remember my brother Stephen, I'll never forget, it was unscrewing the coffin with a dessert spoon, because they wouldn't give him any implements to get the lid off. We got the lid off, my father said goodbye to his daughter. At the funeral of my mother, my father had to be restrained, and we held him down because he was shouting that he let Dawn down, he let his wife down, and that Rosenthal had murdered them both. The devastation that Rosenthal has caused will live with Dawn's brother forever. No amount of good deeds by Rosenthal can now erase the despair, I, or dull the pain. I speak on behalf of my family, Dawn's family, that we do not agree to his commutation. I think that, I've said what I put in the, in the, in, in my statements, but you can see by the way I'm speaking, the feelings are still very raw. This man premeditatedly murdered my sister. He told me on the telephone call, on the telephone, months before what he would do. He carried it out, he held her hostage. This is not a drive-by shooting in America, this is a preta, premeditated murder. He did what he said he was going to do, and I find that abhorrent. What I'm also finding difficult to deal with is here I'm talking to you about this, but I was contacted by, as I said, ADA Boyet. He first, she firstly started to say my mother's condition, she, which she had a, she was depressive anyway, so she would have killed herself basically, which I find abhorrent and disgusting. The second thing, uh, she said, um, was that, um, um, the drug test wasn't reliable. What, does she wanna start the trial again? Do we wanna take everybody in the eighties who had a drug trial? In his, in his own paper that he wrote, that Stan Rosenthal wrote, he says he was on so many drugs, you couldn't believe it. Well, he wrote this in nineteen, let me just see, he wrote this, this article himself, admitting, in nineteen ninety-five, but they didn't find any drugs, they didn't find any drug paraphernalia. But every time he's gone for a pill, he's always blamed drugs as an excuse for murdering my sister. It's not right. But ADA Boyet, or Boyet, she tried to trick me, I think she's on his side, and I, she didn't, she didn't let me know that was the case, but she told me. Um, um, she even sent me some of the trial notes where I said my sister was held captive. And she said, I think I've lost her, am I still there?
Yes, we can still hear you.
Okay, my sister was held captive for forty-eight hours, and basically, A Boyet said, no, that really wasn't the case. But she sent me a statement from the witness who Dawn called while she was being attacked, and she, this, this witness saw Dawn from the window, and she said, call the police. She was being held hostage as she had walked out, she was able to say, call the police, but she couldn't leave. And, um, um, there are other matters. She also talked to Don Ben, one of Dawn's friends, and she said that, uh, she found him disgusting, that he, he breached his, um, his position, because she said that Don Ben was my sister's probation officer. Not true, not factual, he was never her probation officer, he was her boyfriend. And that, really, that's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tepper, for providing testimony. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Tepper?
I don't have any questions, but I do thank you, sir, for your statement.
Thank you.
I, I wanna thank you as well, uh, sir, for really one of the most eloquent statements of victim opposition that I think I have ever heard. And I, 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 I'm sorry that your interactions with a governmental agency in this country uh, have increased your trauma and your pain. It, it shouldn't have to be that way, and I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
Sorry for that.
I would echo that.
Thank you.
Mr. Tepper, um, my name is Josh Shapiro, I'm the Attorney General of Pennsylvania.
Yes.
And I wanna thank you for your comments as well. Uh, and I just wanna express my profound, um, you know, condolences and, and warmest possible wishes to your entire family and your extended family.
Thank you.
I wanna, um, second, uh, put an exclamation point, if I may, on the commentary you made regarding the drug use of the, uh, defendant in this case. I'll share with you that last night, um, this board spent about an hour interviewing Mr. Rosenthal. And for the first, actually, probably was a little bit longer than an hour. Mr. Tepper, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
And, uh, really for the first half or three quarters of it, Mr. Rosenthal continually repeated that he was in, um, you know, a, a quote, "drug-fueled violent outburst." That's what he kept describing. And when I had the opportunity to question him, um, I pointed out to him that that statement, that it was this violent outburst, this drug-fueled violent outburst, didn't actually correlate with any facts in this case. And indeed, the trial judge rejected that defense claim. And the toxicologist and others determined, I think, and you said this, Mr. Tepper, that there was only one drug in his system, and, um, there was example after example that I cited for Mr. Rosenthal about how he acted quite rationally with, I'm just looking at my notes from last night, with the doctors that he encountered, with the police that he encountered, um, with other neighbors and, and other individuals that he encountered.
I'm sorry, can I just, can I just interject, just so you know? Just, just, just one thing. ADA Boyet made it clear, the police lied, otherwise they wouldn't have got the case.
Let, let's, we'll, we'll get to that in a moment. I just wanted to.
Hang on.
Share with you and, and i-if I may, kind of put your mind at ease, that the issues that you raised, I raised last night, after I presented all of this evidence and these facts to Mr. Rosenthal, he said, you, meaning me, are one hundred percent right. He agreed with that. And so, I just shared that with you, that, you know, while he made a number of statements relative to his drug use leading to this crime, when I confronted him with actual facts, I, he accepted those facts and confirmed that I was right. So that, that's what I want you to be aware of, that, um, those facts were introduced into the conversation. Now, the third thing I wanna, uh, state, and this is something I wanna explore with you, is you have referenced, uh, one of Philadelphia District Attorney's, uh, Crowe's deputies, uh, Ms. Boyet, multiple times in your commentary here today. I think you used the word disgusting to.
Disgusting, yes, disgusting.
Describe her conduct, and she'll obviously have a chance to speak for herself, but, um, one, I'm, I'm disturbed to hear that she engaged with you in the first place. Did you have any engagement with the Office of Victim Advocate? They're the ones that are supposed to be talking to the victim, the, the, the family of the victim.
Yes.
You did, and when did that occur?
Um, I, I received a telephone call about, uh, about two, three weeks ago from Interpol to ask if I was Dawn's brother, and it was about, uh, two weeks later, it's about two weeks ago, that they, they contacted me.
And that's the Office of Victim Advocate?
Yeah, Tatiana and another lady, yes.
And, and so then you heard from the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, separate from the Office of Victim Advocate?
That's right, yes.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that for me, thank you. Can you just speak with maybe a little bit more detail as to what you found so objectionable about the ADA's, uh, uh, conversation with you?
Yeah, what I found disgusting is that, um, firstly, she wanted to rewrite the trial or retake the trial, so she wanted to, to, to say that the, that the toxicology was wrong. Uh, it found, um, diisopan or trazepine or whatever in his body, but they didn't find the other drugs, they weren't sufficient enough. He then said, when I said my mother killed herself, she, he tried, she tried to tell me, well, she was sick anyway. She then tried to tell me that, um, she, she found that, um, and this must be all taped on your system, you must have a system that tapes this at the ADA's office. Um, she also tried to tell me that Don Ben, who was a friend of Dawn's, um, um, was, uh, she found him, uh, Um, she also tried to tell me that Don Ben, who was a friend of Dawn's, um, um, was, uh, she found him uh, a, a, a bit, uh, she didn't like his position, but she said he breached his uh, his, his, his professional uh, conduct. Because she, he was her parole officer. This was not correct. She's not reading the right facts. She's not reading the right case. She's discussed with me, of which I found even worse, she discussed with me that one of the reasons she would, you know, she, that he should be let out is because, would you believe, now, I can't make this up. It costs sixty thousand dollars a year to keep Stan Rosenthal in prison and as he gets older, it's going to cost more. What? Are you joking with me? Has that got any relevance to the horrific premeditated murder? You know, and when you talked to me, and I'm very pleased, sorry, you asked me a question, um, there was some other um, um, you know, sending me some of the trial notes that she emailed me regarding the witness. I was looking at the whole trial again. I just found the whole thing very difficult. Um, and um, there was um, another issue I just want to mention, that you said that Stan admitted to you that maybe it wa- maybe he wasn't uh drugged, maybe he wasn't uh, uh, under the influence at the time of the murder. Well, which are we going to take? What he said in his statement then, the one he did in two thousand and nineteen that I have here? Was it that one that's correct? Is it the one he said? He keeps changing with the wind. I, he made it clear in nineteen ninety-four, or ninety-two, whenever he wrote this statement, that all he wants to do is to run on the streets of Philadelphia. You know, he's a very, he's a minor celebrity. He's the madman at the prison. He's a wonderful person. He's a performed character. This is a brutal, premeditated murderer. He needs to never come out of prison. We need to protect other women.
Okay. Um, I, I appreciate you talking with us here today. Uh, I do. And, and let me just say, um, I, I, you know, on behalf of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I'm sorry that you were treated that way by uh, the District Attorney's Office. It's unacceptable. Um, you know, Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams, pardon me, has spoken multiple times throughout our sessions here over the last couple of days about how this is National Crime Victims Rights Week. And I, I would just echo, you know, his sentiment and, and I'm mindful that crime victims matter. Um, and that they ought to be recognized, not just every week, but every single day. For me, as a board member, as the Attorney General, um, victim input in these cases is critically important. It's one of the factors that I consider when making a determination whether or not to recommend a commutation to Governor Wolf. And I want you to know, Mr. Tepper, uh, to you, to your counsel, to the other members who are here, um, we painstakingly review each and every one of these applications. Um, and I know that the horrific violence that occurred in this case, uh, as well as other cases, ripples across the family for generations. It doesn't go away. I'm also keenly aware that the families of victims have a right to be heard in this process and should be heard in this process. And they need to be notified properly by the Office of Victim Advocate, who are trained professionals who know how to speak to victims. They need to be spoken with, uh, spoken to with real compassion. And they need to be given an opportunity to address this board with their own input, not input that is filtered through by others to make a particular point, a point that they are welcome to make, but not one using the victims as, Mr. Tepper, you say was done here. And so I just need you to know, to say that I am, you know, disturbed by the events of what happened here with you and your family is really an understatement. I'm quite appalled by the way in which you were dealt with. There is no excuse for that. And you deserve better, your family deserves better from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Um, I want victim input on the record in every single one of these cases. And I want it coming through the proper process, through the Office of Victim Advocate, not filtered through any District Attorney in Pennsylvania, but through the Office of Victim Advocate. That is the proper procedure here. And I appreciate you, your counsel and others taking time to highlight the deficiency that exists in the system right now. OVA is the agency who is charged with and has the expertise to present information to us in a non-biased way and to deal with victims in a trained manner. That is what we need going forward, in this case and in others. And so I think it's important that every prosecutor, not just the one present here today, let's OVA does its, do its job, provides whatever support to OVA they can. Certainly, my office, the Office of Attorney General, will do that as well. But we need to make sure victims are heard in this process. And I need you to know how much we appreciate, how much I appreciate you speaking up today. I know this is not easy. It is emotionally difficult. And it is made even more difficult by what you've had to deal with over the last few weeks with the DA's office. And that's unacceptable. And so I just, Mr. Tepper, need you to know, we appreciate you. Uh, we remember your daughter, uh, pardon me, I apologize, your sister, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. And um, and very much uh, want to thank you for, for your presence here today.
Thank you.
Any other board members have questions for Mr. Tepper? We also have CCPM Olinger and Deputy Clark from DOC available for questions. And we also have a representative from the Philadelphia DA's office, if there's anything that would like to be asked.
I just wanted to know if Mr. Ben or Mr. Malone were seeking recognition or they were just here to support Mr. Tepper?
I think he's on mute. He's speaking, but he's on mute. Mr. Ben?
I think I'm unmuted now.
I don't.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, Attorney General Shapiro. I, I would like to say a few words.
You're recognized, Mr. Ben.
Thank you so much. My name is Don Ben. I'm sixty-nine years old and a lifelong Pennsylvania resident. I'm here today to voice my feelings and state my opinions on the potential release of an individual who, as we've all heard, viciously and brutally murdered somebody that I cared about. Back in the summer of nineteen eighty-four, the victim of this brutal murder, Dawn Tepper and I, had a short-lived summer romance. When the summer ended, we ended. We went our separate ways, but we were still friends. I didn't see from her, see her, I didn't hear from her until the spring of nineteen eighty-six. The Dawn Tepper that I saw in nineteen eighty-six bore almost no resemblance to the vibrant young woman I'd known and cared for two years earlier. The beautiful young woman with whom I spent the summer of eighty-four had been full of life, full of potential. I was looking forward to whatever the future held for her. The Dawn Tepper that I now saw in nineteen eighty-six was in a hospital room, in a hospital bed, viciously assaulted, almost beyond recognition. And as you heard from her brother, a few days, a few days later, she was dead. The last memories that I have of her, the last memories that her parents have of her and her siblings have of her, was not of her beauty, was not of her sense of adventure, was not of her limited potential, but as the recipient of a brutal, vicious, murderous beating at the hands of an individual who's now asking this board to grant him release. Look, I'm an informed, I'm a liberal, I'm an objective individual. The job that the Integra- Conviction Integrity Unit does is vital and important. You need to make sure the right people are in and the right, and the wrong people are out. I'm also aware of the parole and commutation process, that institutional behavior and length of sentence have to be considered in any decision you make. But I also understand the severity of the crime. This act of unspeakable violence reached far beyond Philadelphia. It went across an entire ocean, causing grief and sorrow a continent away. It's been thirty-six years and people on both sides of the Atlantic Ocean still mourn, still grieve. It doesn't happen with too many killers in the Philadelphia system. It happened with this one. One last thought that I'm out of here. Mr. Rosenthal's religion has been brought up. That's also my religion. It was also Dawn Tepper's religion. And to those of us of the Jewish faith, today is a special day. It's called Yom Hashoah, Holocaust Remembrance Day. It's when not just those of us who are Jewish, but decent people around the world of every faith take time to remember and reflect upon the six million European Jews who were viciously, brutally and horribly murdered. Dawn Tepper was a European Jew. Dawn Tepper was viciously, horribly, brutally murdered. Now, the last time I looked at a calendar, there were three hundred and sixty-five days in it. I don't want to tell the state how to do their business, but maybe just maybe Holocaust Remembrance Day should not be the day that the Commonwealth decides that it would be a swell idea to release someone who horribly, viciously, brutally murdered a European Jew. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ben. Any questions for Mr. Ben from the board?
No, thank you, Mr. Ben, for being here.
I just want to say thank you.
Okay. Any uh, questions for the DOC representatives or the representative from the Philadelphia DA's office?
I don't have any questions for either of the people you named.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the next case, twelve PM session, Felix B. Rosato. We have CCPM Olinger and Deputy Clark from DOC. On behalf of Mr. Rosato, we also have Reverend John Pidgen and Sean Kelly here in support of Felix Rosato.
Yeah, I got a text. Um, Tom, you look great.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, it looks like we have Mr. Kelly and again, we have the DOC representatives. Uh, Mr. Kelly, did you have a statement you wanted to read to the board?
I do. Uh, thank you so much, Secretary Trustee. Um, Dear members of the board, I'm Sean Kelly. I'm the Senior Vice President at Eastern State Penitentiary, the prison museum here in Philadelphia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of one of the most extraordinary people I know, Felix Rosato. I've known Felix for more than ten years. When I first met him, Felix was working with Temple University's Inside Out Program. That's the program that brings undergraduate students into prisons to learn side by side with incarcerated students. Felix was part of the group that was training the university professors in dialogue facilitation in preparation to teach these classes. Felix quickly became both a formal and informal advisor to us and to me. He was particularly helpful as we created our exhibit about mass incarceration and when we began hiring formerly incarcerated people as educators in twenty sixteen. The ethics of that program are very complex, as you can imagine, and Felix brought a lot of wisdom to our hiring decisions and training processes. I asked Felix once about the moment his life really changed. He started by describing the process of restorative justice training that forced him to reflect on the extraordinary pain that he had caused the family of his victim. He told me that he had spent years trying to block those thoughts from his mind, but he finally had to accept that his actions had created this pain. He told me about the moments that he decided to stop his destructive behaviors. And he also told me about a moment several years after that. He'd fallen into a deep depression, realizing that he had taken life and nothing could ever change that. He went to sleep every night and woke up every morning in an environment that reminded him of the life that he took. The advice he received from a Department of Corrections therapist was that if he continued to put himself at the center of his thinking, his life would continue to feel hopeless. The therapist encouraged him to focus on helping others. Felix told me that his entire life changed within a year of following that advice. The Felix Rosato that I met ten years ago had already been following this advice for more than a decade. During the time I've known Felix, he's graduated summa cum laude from Villanova University. This is actually the same degree that I have, the only difference being that Felix was by far the better student. I've also learned about Felix's devout Catholic faith and the ways in which he has gained support on the outside from an incredible network of people, including the Berks County District Attorney, uh, his home county, Felix's home county. Felix founded a restorative justice group in prison called Let's Circle Up. Restorative justice is built on the foundation that the offender must take full responsibility for the harm he or she has caused. It is also based on dialogue and deep listening. We call this generous listening in historic sites. And we believe that true dialogue requires genuine curiosity and respect for the opinions with people you may, with whom you may disagree. We try to embody these values here at Eastern State Penitentiary, but it's difficult. Um, because of Felix's enormous skill in training dialogue facilitators, we began bringing our educators into SCI Gredeford, later into SCI Phoenix, at the start of their tour training. Over time, we began to bring our entire staff, even our accountants and grant writers, because the conversations were so productive around our organizational values and respect for multiple opinions. I've continued to work with Felix uh, in other capacities over the years. In twenty eighteen, the Department of Corrections facilitated Felix as uh, in our speaker series. He spoke live by speakerphone from Gredeford and, as I predicted, uh, brought tears to the eyes of our visitors here at the historic site. In twenty nineteen, Felix and I wrote an academic article together on the subject of time. Uh, we had many long conversations on, as we wrote that article together. He's become a close personal friend. When I hit a difficult patch in my personal life last year, Felix was among the friends that I reached out to for advice. He was enormously comforting and insightful. It has long been a goal of mine to hire Felix onto our staff. The job that I created for Felix at Eastern State Penitentiary is on our leadership team, supervising educators and uh, setting our educational priorities. The salary's in the mid-forties. The position has full medical and retirement benefits. It's a job we can build a future around. I am disappointed that Felix has actually a better job offer from the Youth Art and Self Empowerment Project, one that fits his interests a little better than ours. But of course, I'm happy for them and I'm happy for Felix. Um, and Felix, I really pray you come home and if the job there doesn't work out, I will always have a place here in the leadership team for you at Eastern State Penitentiary. In closing, Felix will bring positive change to our communities, encouraging respect for the opinions and experiences of others and preaching a story of, of accountability in a small but meaningful way. We need all the help we can out here uh, in, at this time in America. I respectfully ask that you support commutation for Felix Rosato and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any questions from the board for Mr. Kelly?
No questions.
Thank you. We have Reverend John Pidgen, I believe, who is also going to speak. Reverend Pidgen, are you available? While we wait for Reverend Pidgen, I'm sorry, are there any questions for our DOC reps, Olinger and Clark?
I am here.
Oh, okay, great. Um, we can't, yes, we can't see, but we can hear you. Did you have a statement you wanted to make?
I do and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not very uh, skilled with the uh, with the smart phones.
No problem at all.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, I am John Pidgen and, I am John Pidgen and I am a Catholic priest. I was chaplain at Gredeford, started in twenty fifteen and continued at SCI Phoenix until uh, uh, March nineteenth of this year, when I retired. And may I say that I've never been more nervous speaking to a group as I am today. And I was reflecting on that because I don't get nervous speaking in front of groups with all my experience. But I realize what so much is at stake here. And so I just hope that I do, uh, Felix's justice of, of what a man that he is. I've known him very closely for the last seven years. And I've known him because he was a chapel worker. I know him from his activeness in the Catholic community. Uh, he was a go-to guy. Uh, I knew if I asked him, it would get done. Uh, he was an excellent communicator, a proclaimer of the word. And his reflections, when we, when we did Bible studies, were, were moving. You could tell the guys were listening and respecting what he said. And I think that they respected what he said because they knew the way he lived. When we were at Gredeford, the guys told me, he remained on a very tough block, D Block, because he wanted to make a difference. And guys would come to him with their problems. And they said that after they left Felix, they felt so much better. That's the kind of man that Felix is. Long before I met Felix, he already had, he already had um, uh, repented and, and, and changed, uh, changed his ways through the grace of God. And uh, because of his leadership skills and, and deep faith, I asked him to join me in doing forgiveness retreats. And in those forgiveness retreats, one of the topics was dealing with regret. And, and he made a great distinction. There's a healthy regret and there is a toxic regret. Healthy regret means that you move forward and, and, and not forgetting all the harm that you did. And I've seen that in the life of Felix. Felix was able to embrace what he did and yet try to become the man that God Felix able to embrace what he did and yet try to become the man that God wanted him to be. One of the aspects of healthy regret is that you pray for the, you pray for the family that harmed you, and the second thing is you try to be the best person that you can be going, going forward. He has great empathy. He, he, he has good communication skills, he lives his faith in action, and he has the respect of all the administrative staff and chaplains at SCI Phoenix. I've had many private conversations with him. Sometimes I'm wondering who's ministering to who, because I feel so uplifted after speaking with him. It's for these reasons that I'm humbly requesting the Board of Pardons to recommend commutation for Felix. The good he will do will mirror the good he has done and limit. I am confident that Felix will be a law-abiding citizen and make a worthy contribution to society, who will make all proud to be, as he continues his advocacy for the good of all. And I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Reverend Pigeon. Any questions from the board members for Reverend Pigeon?
No, thank you, Reverend Pigeon, for your statements.
Thank you, Father Pigeon.
Thank you.
Great, all right, moving on, we have Leroy F. Cotton. We also have DSCS Clark and CCPM Olinger from DOC representing Mr. Cotton, and we also have Troy Cotton, who is the brother of Leroy Cotton, speaking in support, and we have Jessica Addy from Philadelphia Office of District Attorney, is also available for any questions. Mr. Cotton, did you have a statement you wanted to say about your brother Leroy to the board?
Yes. Good morning. I want to, I want to begin my statement with thanking you for this opportunity to speak on my brother Leroy's behalf. I also want to give thanks and for you even considering him up to having this hearing. I want to give our deepest sympathy and remorse to the Mark Hughes family. I understand that the circumstances that revolve in this case caused a devastating impact on the Mark Hughes family. So I want to give my deepest sympathy once again to the Mark Hughes family. I want to speak about the impact that my brother had on my family for the last 40 years. He's been a leading figure in our family with making decisions according to Family Matters for the last 40 years. That was very vital and important to our family. I also want you to know, excuse me, that our family's been supporting him his entire 40 years of being incarcerated, and we will continue to support him if you show the mercy of releasing him from incarceration. He has support of our immediate family, our extended family, and various members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cotton. And do any board members have any questions for Mr. Cotton?
No, just thank you for your statement.
You're welcome.
Glad to hear that. Thank you for being with us, Mr. Cotton.
You're welcome.
Any questions for our DOC representatives that are available, or the Office of District Attorney representative that's available?
I do not have any questions for either of those people.
Okay, hearing no more questions, that is the last case that we are hearing for this session. We will adjourn.